Alan, we're live now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just making sure that we point out that they didn't use the Peter Blunt method.
What? What? They didn't use?
Yeah. I think these rates could potentially be lower.
Oh, oh, like, use it against anything.
That's right.
Look, quarters and flumps down.
All right. It's 4th of June at 9 o'clock, special call session of the county board of commissioners, and we have a forum present, I called meeting to order.
So, Mr. Chairman, we ask the board to convene because we've had a challenging, we'll say, renewal for our employee healthcare. Our brokers have been hard at work trying to put a reasonable option or several options together. We can talk about what those potential options are here in a minute, but my thought was I would go ahead and have them present what the staff has already seen in a summarized way so that you can see how we got from where we were on our Cigna plan to now a recommendation to move away from Cigna to Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and then how we want to approach that move, how much it's going to cost, how much it'll cost the employees as far as what their contributions will be, and how much additional cost it will be to the county. So, I think we'll just cover that in a few parts if that's okay.
Can I ask a question? So, my understanding is that open enrollment opens up on June 7th, is that correct?
We're hoping so. Depending on what the outcome of this means.
So, I guess the first question I got before we get into the meat of this is, how do we prevent this? You know, we're going, I mean, we're right into a fire hose. We got, what's it, funds, and we got to make a decision today, potentially. We can't, we gotta have time to digest this, I mean, and come up with options because, you know, believe it or not, more than one person has options, you know, has ideas that we could come up with, that we may formulate something. I just, and this happened to us last year. What do we gotta do, or is it even possible that we can do this better, that we've got time to see this?
So, the brokers reach out to the insurance companies to try to get the best rates, and the closer we are to our renewal date, the better the rates could be, potentially. So, that is part of the reason for pushing it out as far as we can go. Our rates are based on what claims come through.
Right.
So, what we provide to the insurance company, you know, to get the best rates possible for us is the closer we are to our renewal date. So, that is potentially some of the issue of, you know, bringing in as close to the renewal July 1st as possible.
But, I'm like, you might...
Yeah. Got it, Stan?
No, 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 I mean, but let me say this before you go into it any further. I mean, I get that, but also know that you gotta be looking at this hour away because you have to formulate, you have to formulate it.
Right, right.
And I know, I don't know if you call this Mazz, I don't really know what you call, but I know things can change, but, I mean, I would think within a 30-day window, a month or so, we ought to be pretty close. I mean, I don't think you're gonna see, I mean, you guys have experience of this, I don't, but I would think you're not gonna see a 30% swing in 30-day period on your annual changes.
No, not at all. And we did look throughout the year, and we have periodic meetings with the team here to kind of update what, you know, what we're seeing claims-wise. We do try to get a head start on things. We get the, we usually get the actual renewal, whether it's from Blue Cross or Cigna or United Healthcare or whoever, right about 60 days prior to, okay? Sometimes a few, maybe 70 days prior to, but normally not much sooner than that. So, you're dealing with a pretty limited amount of time. We do try to set up the market that we're going to go out to. We try to go ahead and get everybody kind of on alert, hey, we're going to bring you Upson Counties, IRP for Upson County Board of Commissioners and their employee benefit plan, get ready for it. Once they get all the claims data, which is pretty limited when you're dealing with Cigna or United Healthcare, then there's a lot of back and forth between the carriers, us trying to get better claims data, the carriers telling us, we've given you what we can give you, answering questions for other carriers. There's a lot of back and forth, and is it ideal to be squeezed in this kind of timeframe? Absolutely not. And ultimately, we would like to build a program where there's a lot more control over it, and we're not so dependent on a big carrier, a Blue Cross or a Cigna or a United. Ultimately, to do better, to your point, is we would like to have a partially self-insured program where we can control a lot of the moving parts in there. It allows us to really structure a multi-year plan around this, where we're not going year to year having to fight Blue Cross, United, or whoever, but rather we're pulling some of the strains inside of the big program. The challenge we're faced with as far as moving into that sort of environment is we've experienced some really, really drastic claims, and we can talk more about that right here. But, you know, until we can get into that kind of a partially self-insured environment where we do have more control, where it is more of a multi-year business plan instead of a, you know, we're marketed every year, maybe move Cigna one year, then Blue the next, bouncing around, you know, until we do that, it is kind of a hair-on-fire type of process, unfortunately. So, and I totally agree, we would love to not have to go through that every year and do with, you know, inside the 30 days of the actual renewal date and try to get something approved a week, week or so before we'd like to start enrollment.
Just for my own clarification, and this is my first time, and probably Chris's too, Commissioner Biggs, but you're in healthcare field, so you might understand better than me. So, what I think I heard you say was about 60 days prior to renewal, you have the quote kind of, but I think I heard you said like 30 days prior to renewal, we have to start open enrollment, so we really only have a 30-day window from the time we know what it's going to cost, to the time our employees have to sign up.
Yeah. Especially if we're changing from carrier A to carrier B on the major medical plan, we'd like to have that done at least two weeks prior to the effect date so that they can get everything loaded in their system so that come July 1st, all the employees have access to their benefits, and we're not rushed trying to get that accomplished.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think I know kind of where you're going with that question. They need to get their renewal before they can take that renewal back out to market and shop it against other offers. And so, so they, when you're fully insured, they got it with 60 days to go, then they immediately have to get out to the market and says, well, here's where we are with our current carrier, what can you do for us? So, and then that's what they're doing in that 30-day period.
Is there something we can do to mitigate that from this point? As I'm assuming, as you guys look at that information and it comes in, and y'all experienced enough that, you know, like, hey, it's probably going to be an increase here. All I'm saying is, is let's stop talking about it then, coming up with a plan. We not know what that percentage is, but we realize it's going to be an increase.
Would it be helpful for us to not only, just to make sure that the board's got, you know, whether it's 60 days prior in or even three-quarters through the year, kind of idea of, hey, here's potentially what we're looking at?
I think it would probably help all of us because we can start thinking about it as a group, you're already thinking about it, and then we can bounce ideas back and forth because as of today, and just because of the way it's lined out, we only have a few options. I think there's probably more options, but these are the quickest and the clearest options. And sometimes the quickest and the clearest might not necessarily be the best for the employee or the county. So, I just, I just think we all have time, a little time to have some dialogue, to discuss that, determine, hey, have we thought about this, can we do this? And you guys are gonna have to tell us that, can we do that?
Sure.
That's what I'm saying. I hate coming in, you gotta pick A, B, or C.
So, that's kind of back on us. We had options, but the clearest and the best, we thought, would be moving to Anthem with this in place. It was the cheapest that they presented to us, and there were other options, but we felt that it was probably not the best option for our employees right now, based on the information that they presented. So, we kind of took the number and funneled them down to the three best from what they presented, just because of the time and the information that they gave us.
Are you referring to that curative?
Yes.
Yes.
What is, I'm jumping down, but what is that?
So, there are, that's a good question. There have been a number of, I call them boutique programs that have popped up over the last 15 years or so, maybe a little bit beyond that, where a lot of private equity money is involved. They decided, hey, we can bank a lot of money in the insurance business, which is true, and so they build these programs out. Curative is new to Georgia. It's a name not familiar to many people, probably, but their value proposition is if members will complete a telephonic health assessment within the first 120 days, then they have no deductible, no copay, zero member liability throughout the year, and through that first 120 days as well. Their goal, they know that's going to open up the floodgates potentially early on, but their ultimate goal is to try to capture more member data, get a better understanding about those health situations, where they are, maybe provide some coaching, you know, if they realize there's a bunch of diabetics who aren't complying with their medications, they'll figure out a way to keep them from having any financial barriers to getting what they need. So, that's kind of their value proposition. They're brand new to Georgia. There's some things that we're comfortable with, but things that we're also not 100% comfortable with them. We've got one case with them right now, and I'm not sure the one that helped you get it to be a guinea pig. But there are a lot of these solutions out there, and we do vet a lot of them. So, we're not just going to Blue Cross, Cigna, United, and that, we're looking at the vast array of solutions.
And we didn't feel comfortable recommending that to you because we didn't even really have any references we could tap for that.
Okay. So, I know we probably all got questions, but I want to go ahead and just do the presentation part, and then come back and have discussion and questions.
Sure. Well, you know, first of all, thanks for letting us be here this morning, and it is short notice, but, you know, we appreciate that. But it is such an important part of, it's a big-ticket item, and it's such a important part of, you know, your employees' compensation. And it is something that we see, you know, industry-wide, these costs continue to increase, and it's something that there's nationwide, you know, the carriers all claim to have a trend of 8% to 12%, and there's not too many industries that can claim that they grow at that pace. And I don't know if there's a whole lot of things going on out there that are actually helping to reduce the cost of claims. It's a crazy industry to say that it leads, but there are ultimate solutions, and I'll touch on that towards the end. But to jump into the summary that we provided, we did receive a 24% increase from Cigna. There are multiple, I mentioned this earlier, high-cost claimants, and there's at least five over $100,000, the highest had about $325,000 in claims that kept the plan this year. And even beyond that, there's a lot more from $25,000 and higher. About $2 million in total claim spend was the result of claims over $25,000. Some of those are diagnoses, some of them are diagnoses plus pharmacy spend. There are a lot of dependents that are high-cost claimants. So, you know, as we collect more data, then we can help to maybe figure out where these dollars are being spent and ultimately be able to put in some solutions to help mitigate some of that.
Can you say again how much they spent this year in claims?
Just the ones that were $25,000 or over were $2 million, just under $2 million.
Okay.
So, and the several of those high-dollar, over $100,000 claims are going to be ongoing claims, okay? So, when they factor in their renewal, they're looking at those persisting into the next year, and they're basing those rates on the fact that they know they're going to have those popping up throughout the year. The loss ratio is 123%, meaning they pay out 23% more in claims than they receive in agreement, is the simple explanation there. We did, through our marketing efforts, approach the normal usual suspects as well as curatives, and we looked at several other solutions, including looking at partially self-insured programs for a variety of reasons, mainly the existing claims, it's just not the right time to enter into something like that. Moving into that type of program is usually best when things are kind of called, right now or not, it's kind of like trying to buy insurance when your house is already on fire. So, ultimately, we do want to move into that, at least make a, bring a proposal to you that will move into that sort of environment, because it does help put a lot of control and leverage we can pull to help bring some cost down. So, Blue Cross did provide us with what we felt was the most favorable solution from a, and also provided a branded carrier that we know the employees are going to be very comfortable with. Again, it's a 14% increase over the prior current year rates, as well as a $30,000 administrative credit. So, the first or second invoice, they'll just have a $30,000 credit against that invoice. The employees will feel minimal to any disruption as far as access goes. Around here, that Blue Cross network is probably greater than Cigna's. Cigna's is very, very good, Blue Cross is better, and their discounts are a little bit more aggressive as well, so hopefully that will help reduce some claims going forward as well. We did look, we just looked at three different cost-sharing models. Of course, we can tweak that however we want to. The first we looked at was if we, if the county took on 100% of the increase, the impact of the county would be about $430,000, okay? That keeps the employees' portion of the premiums, their payroll deductions exactly as they are today. The second we looked at is if the employees took on 100% of the increase. And we had to adjust that a little bit to account for the Affordable Care Act or ACA. I don't know how familiar you are with that, but it does provide that, there are requirements that an employee can only pay a certain percentage of their compensation towards the premium. So, we had to make some adjustments there, but otherwise, we would pass the entire amount on to the employees. If we went that route, it would tweak the cost sharing to about 70%, 75% on the county, 25% to the employees, and about $350,000 impact to the county. The third thing we looked at is if we kept the percentage share as, just as it is today, which is, it helps kind of spread the increase amongst the county and the employees. Did that, kept the cost sharing across the three plans at 84% on the county and 16% of the employees, the impact there to Upson County is about $340,000 increase year over year. Not all of them, of course, the employees enrolled in exactly the same plan they're enrolled in now, which they probably won't. There'll be some moving there, but that gives us a pretty good idea of what we've been looking at there. You know, from there down, we talked about curative. There were some challenges, not challenges there, but things that we didn't have 100% comfort with there. Again, I wasn't real comfortable with you all being a potential guinea pig for a curative, being a new solution in the state of Georgia. They also had some limited pharmacy benefits that gave us some concerns as well. The other lines, dental vision, we would keep with Cigna. Those rates really aren't changing, and we don't have any, haven't heard of many issues with those. And the other lines, State of the Union, America, got a rate pass there to, on the life and disability. So, that's where we are today. Again, we can tweak the cost-sharing models however we want to. It's entirely up to y'all, but we do need to be partisan of the Affordable Care Act and making sure we're complying with that if we do decide to put more share on the employees.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question. And that only applies to the employee, not to any other covered area?
That's correct. So, the way that works is, we just do that math based on the lowest cost plan, the employee-only portion of the lowest cost plan.
So, would all local physicians be within network?
Yes. Of course, they can come out of network at any time, but with Blue Cross, we don't have any issues there. It's very, very subtle not to listen to somebody not involved or not contracting with Blue Cross, whether it's locally or really throughout the state. So, and they can even travel beyond the state, so it's not limited to just Georgia. Somebody needs to go to, somebody needs to go to Indy Anderson or Mayo or something like that, there's exceptions there as well.
So, do we have a spreadsheet or something that shows like currently employees paying this much for themselves? I might put my glasses on.
But they use some interesting code words up there that they need to know.
I do have another quick question, and this may be for Jessica or Shree, but how do the employees feel about changing the carriers from year to year? I know the last two years we've been on Cigna, but it seems like since I've been on, we've changed probably every year.
Well, I mean, it's a pain. You know, they get accustomed to the way things work, so, but hopefully, you know, really, the issue is with the drugs. So, what is pre-approved under Cigna, they have to go through the, you know, the full rooms and all of that stuff to get the doctor to do the Anthem or the Etnor or whatever. So, regardless of what group we're with, there's data at the beginning of the year that my medicine is, you know, filling the blank, I gotta get this one done, I gotta do that.
And the pre and the pre-approvals are different, too?
Yeah, and normally, the actual care is pretty much the same. There's not really any complaints about that part. It's just the, at the beginning of the year, we have to go through the pre-approval stuff.
I just wondered if, you know, if the cost was really the kicker to the employees or was the convenience?
It's, there's a little bit of both. We find that usually if, I can say if we could have gotten Cigna down to one or two pretty close to Blue Cross, the cost associated with the change, it probably would have been worse. So, it's, you know, again, our goal ultimately, with any employer y'all size, would be to move into an environment where we can get out of having to make these changes every two or three years. I'd love to have a five- to seven-year period where we're moving things inside a program that most employees don't even see or feel.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something just to point out? If you flip to the last page, this is a summary of what, based on what they recommended that both employer and employee share in the 14% equal it increase. This would be the annual cost to the employee increase for... Yes. So, under base plan, with employee only, it's $127,000. And then...
What? We're dropping. It's $126,000.
$126,82. And so, that, can you see where the numbers are, the number of employees participating? That's Santa Claus.
Okay. So, we have very few in the top end of the...
Now, all of that information, well, almost all of it is in the very first spreadsheet that they prepared. The only thing is that if I, we had asked them to add that annual, they don't, I don't think in there, in this spreadsheet, it shows you the annual cost for last year. It's out to the far right, though, it is showing under the actual incrementary. So, this, that back page is a good way to look at the summary.
So, this back page that we're looking at right now with the renewal plan shows the annual premium increase for the employee based on what percentage?
That's if we shared in the increase. That would be basically giving it 84% on the county where we are now.
Okay. And then, my question would be, what is the average, like, industry standard for employee, employer split?
It's, in the municipality world, we see anywhere from 75%, the employers paying 75% up to, some are still doing 100%, although it's getting pretty rare. So, y'all are inside of that range. I think, and locally, you know, y'all seem to be on the higher end as well.
Yeah. So, I ask that, right, because in Upson County, you know, the largest employees, employers in Upson County are part of the government, right? And so, just comparatively, like, what are our constituents paying in healthcare insurance? What kind of percentage are they in the, and I'm not saying it needs to be the same, I just want to make sure I understand what we're dealing with here.
Well, I think Jason should like the state, is another large employer here locally, and the state is, I don't know what those percentages are.
Now, without knowing what they pay on the back end, we only know what their employees pay.
But just looking at the rates, in the first tier, obviously, is the state employer pays more than...
Yeah. I, you and I are both in commercial environment, and I know where I work, it's about 27% for the employee.
Yeah. And we're a little different in the fact that we sell insure unless it gets over to a catastrophic period, but, and we haven't had a rate increase with Blue Cross, Blue Shield in three years. But our payouts have been a lot less.
Now, I would caution the board, just to, I think when you are comparing county to, say, hospital to Interfor to Quad, or, you know, you would want to look at total... comp. You wouldn't want to just look at what insurance coverage was, but.
Yeah, and I don't have that.
Yeah. And typically speaking, you know, municipalities do tend to put a lot of weight on, on the benefits. So, we, that's, that's why you typically do see municipalities paying, again, at least three quarters of the total on behalf of employees.
And that's typically revolved around the fact of, of, of some of the positions potentially in, in the, out in the market being more, which I think that over, as of the last five years, has probably shifted a little more. It's probably not still as, you can't come into an entry level position here and maybe make the same, or maybe can't, I don't know. But I think that probably, the benefit package was easier to offer than it was to pay by the hour, by salary. But, but I, only thing I, I think we, we got to just talk about this. I mean, all right, so, the options before us, if, two of the options, if we take those on, Alan, Jason, anybody can, what is a mill tax?
Um, nil right now based on a digest.
And dollars.
Okay, so, let's just take the highest one if we, and, and, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, so we'll make sure I'm understanding it's right. So, if we go to Blue, the, 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 what makes Blue Cross so attractive is they're giving us thirty thousand dollars in credits. Basically, they're giving us thirty thousand dollar discount. That's a one time, here it is. You get, that, it's just to get us over there. All right? But, I heard you say something while, yeah, we, we got claims that's going to carry over. If we have claims that pick up from there and go over, then next year, at a minimum, we're probably going to eat thirty thousand dollars, right? I mean, we're going to have an increase of about thirty thousand dollars, okay? So, we're going to do four hundred and three thousand now, and then we'll potentially another thirty thousand dollars next year, and then we still got to pay a compensation plan. So, and then we really don't know what the impacts of 581 is going to, so we think, well, okay, we got this phase going up in here, we got businesses and all that. Most of the businesses are in the city, most of the rental homes are in the city. So, what is going to be our impact? So, I guess what I'm saying is, is everything we do is directly related to homeowners and property owners. So, we can't, we, I'm just saying, keep that in mind as we, we think about this, because it's easy for us to get up here and start writing checks, but.
Almost half a mill.
Right. So, just, we don't, does anybody, do we know what 581, how that's going to impact us?
Nothing until we.
I mean, because I know what Alan's going to say. I, I got to pay bills, guys, you got to do something.
Yeah.
You can count on that.
Right. You know, and, and we're not selling lemonade and cookies and none of that other stuff. And I'm, you know, right now, the, the, me personally, when people feel taxed to death, and then we're about to potentially have us, you know, this, what is it, the?
Floss?
No, well, it, it, floss, potentially go out of there. Like, I'm just saying, and I get it, they're all different, but it's, people just are feeling strapped in and taking advantage of us. So, we just need to take all that into consideration when we make this decision, because it, it's got impacts far beyond us. And, you know, like I said, we're going to have, our employees are expecting if we follow our pay and compensation plan, we're going, we can't dismiss that. So, we just keep stacking on. We're spending money we got. So, we need to be very cautious of this, what we do, and we need to put some thought into it. And that was the only reason I brought up the thing at first, because I don't want to discount our employees. They, they, they make it run, but we, we got to do, we, we got to find a happy medium there. Now, what is that? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, and Jason, one thing I noted on here too, probably would be good to give you the total annual cost, we've given you annual increase, to show you the total cost for each of those insurance options. We have everything displayed in per payroll period. That makes sense to us. You got to take the hundred and one, five, six.
Well, and I get it, but, but I think that's, that's what the employees going to look at. I mean, that's what's going to be most important to them, how much is going to cost me, how much my check's going, am I going to lose every two weeks? That's what they're going to want to know, that's what I want to know as an employee.
Right, so we can show you how much we're picking up, how much the employee's paying in total annual dollars per plan. I did an average yesterday, if you look at like that second page, it shows you the sharing percentages. It's, we're, we're right at eighty when you average all of that in. We're, we're picking up about eighty percent of the total cost for our entire plan.
Which one do you live in?
So, if you go to the second page, they've got the ER contribution, that's what we're covering. And we did sand these down a little last year, they were higher than this to try to mitigate some of the cost increase. But you can see that sharing ratio, of course, when you get into the tobacco, is much lower than that top base plan. And so, and on the buy that plan, non-tobacco, you can see eighty-three percent for single. But most of our people are in, you know, the, the base plan and that mid-plan, non-tobacco, because the vast majority of where our people are on our plan, they're using. So, we can always adjust that employer contribution downward, and it'll make, you know, more of the employee will have to take cut. Now, to make a difference, to make a real difference, you got to do some adjustments, not a couple percentage points, but maybe five to ten in that, to, to see an appreciable decrease in our cost. And so, when you're looking at a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, to make that, soften that, that's a, you know, a hundred thousand, you got to ship a hundred thousand more onto our employees as far as the cost, and it will be spread across everybody. And it's like the people that get hurt, of course, are the folks with dependents who work. So, like for a single person, it's about a thousand dollars a year, our rate.
So, that eighty-four, sixteen split on option three, is that, because these are all different based on the different plans, is that kind of just an average?
That's right. And that's total dollars.
That's averaging out when you get to the total cost of the premium and the, and total cost that employees are paying.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, to kind of tie in what Alan was saying with what our brokers were saying earlier, if you, and we don't have this for you, but I'm, I'm looking at some of my notes from our meetings early on when they went to the market. According to Cigna, yeah, our employee, compared to this, now, this is just Cigna's data versus all their other accounts. Our regular employee is about forty-six percent higher cost than their standard, and then our dependents are about twenty-five percent higher than standard, but spouse coverage is almost double what is standard in the Cigna network. So, really, what was driving our cost, when, when you look at some of the individual high cost claims, what was driving our cost was spouses that are on our plan, more than anything.
Very high spouses.
Yep. So, there's always the possibility to say, you know, we're, we're going to be right there for the employee at eighty-five percent, but maybe for family coverage, we're going to be at sixty-five, and we could have, I mean, they could run those numbers after they left here in an hour and have them back to us, so, you know, they could probably run them if we took a break. So, there's other things we can consider, not to throw a wrench in it, but. The other thing is, what, you know, what are we encouraging? Are we, you know, are we, are we utilizing it as a tool for recruiting and retaining by having spouses on our plans? You know, it's just hard, it's just hard to know. We're such a small workforce, so.
So, how difficult would it be able to give us those numbers?
I just want to set it as a standard policy.
Right. You know, I think that, just for the, just for the chairman and Commissioner Biggs, you know, we've, we've been battling this for a while. It, it, this didn't start yesterday, it didn't start last year, it's been going on for the last six years actually. But, and we, every year, we, and staff knows, every year, we thought, well, at, at some point, we've got to start, but we can't just keep, the spoon's got way too big for the mouth, and we just, we, we've been talking about it year after year. We got, we're going to have to start passing some of this back, we can't keep this up. So, I just want to share that with you. This isn't something that, this is the first time we've talked about it, so.
I want to say, and to Commissioner Ellington's point, I mean, I think last year was the first time we increased employee rates in six years, right?
The sharing percentage?
The sharing percentage, not, not the increase.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, correct. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we all see an increase every year.
I mean, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but now, some of this, you only have about, how many do we have more department employees? Five, six? So, so some of these, you know, those costs are being paid for.
Right.
Not by property taxes. IDAs on our plan, airports on our plan. So, some of those, I don't know how many in total, you could give an exact number, but some of those costs are being borne by those separate entities, they're not being funded from tax dollars. So, I couldn't tell you how much, but it's not going to be a huge number, but just something to take into mind. When we get into the budget season, wherever we go with this, I mean, when we discuss cola, no cola, you know, you have to look at the total impact, you know, just have to cognizant of the total impact to employees. So, if we, this is a pay cut if we change the sharing. No, it's actually a, a reduction in their total income with premiums just going up. As a whole, we can't help that, so. But then if we shift the sharing, that's a further decrease in their take on that. That's advantageous to them if they itemize on their tax return, perhaps, maybe, but then if we, you know, just, the big picture, the total compensation is the salary and the benefits, so.
And Alan, I, I, I apologize, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, just give me a close number if you could. So, so if we have a three and a half percent increase for county employees on the pay and step increase this year, what, what would that closely ballpark look like?
Probably about, based on our total compensation, three hundred and fifty thousand, roughly.
So, we're looking at three, six hundred potentially.
Is that, do we have about?
Other than half a mill, maybe a little more.
So, our baseline digest growth, we've, what we received, a couple of months ago, our digest has grown ninety-two million. So, if we leave the village unchanged, which is what we put on there as far as our estimated village rate, not the rollback rate, but our revenue will increase about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, just keeping the same village rate of nine point five times the increase in our net digest, so.
And that's based on 581 calculation?
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
So. Just. So, half of any revenue gain would go to pay for insurance.
And it's bar, nothing happens.
Yeah.
And where, where is our reserves at down to now?
Um.
You, you just went over.
We're still, I mean, our, our reserves are, are pretty solid. We're, I don't want to say out loud because I can't recall off the top of my head.
I know you just went over.
I think it's a little over ten million.
Unordered.
I, I committed a fine balance for general fund.
Right.
Yeah, Jason, back to your point about passing on more share to spouses and dependents. I just, I, I took the, if we shared in the increase, I took that and reduced the county's portion by ten percent across the board for all dependents, spouse dependents. And it did have an impact, but it wasn't this kind of, Alan, what you were saying earlier, that changes the county's total of four hundred and three thousand dollars. Excuse me. That gets us down to a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars to the county and two hundred and five thousand to the employee, as far as total increase. And that looks more like an eighty to twenty spread down from, so that, I mean, that, that does significantly change it. Again, reduces the total employer spend, a hundred ninety, to a hundred ninety-eight thousand from three hundred and forty thousand, but it's putting an additional, two tens, it's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars on the, the employee to cover their spouses.
That'd be, because we have about a hundred and sixty employees, roughly, that are participating on plan.
And about seventy cover spouses, spouses and ortho dependents. Sixty-six, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, getting back to Commissioner Ellington's point, he and I had the conversation yesterday, you know, thirteen percent a year is unsustainable. If you put it in the employees' pockets, you know, at four percent a year, and then just let them make their own healthcare decisions on whether or not they want to keep their family on the plan or drop them, or, and it's always an option, or a combination of those options can be made. Because you know, you know what, you're that employee from a salary perspective, is it going to cost you next budget cycle? You don't know what their healthcare is going to cover, so. I think what we have, as a board, have discussed over the last six years is, are we ever going to set a policy of this is what the board will cover for the employee, and this is what they'll cover for a spouse, and this is what they'll cover for dependents as a percentage of the total? We've just, we've never gotten there, so, yeah, like, this board knows, most of the time, we're just heated.
It is, y'all are fairly spread out depending on which plan, and that happens over time. You know, I, I too, I don't like to see any employer establish a kind of a base saying, all right, we're going to pay ninety percent of our base plan, and then you can choose to buy up to all these others, but our, our focus is on you, the employee, and less so on, on the dependents. We may pay a little bit more for you, the employee, but ultimately, you know, and you also want to encourage spouses who have coverage elsewhere, make sure they're enrolling on those plans and not on the county plans. You know, there is a surcharge relative to that, but, but, again, ultimately, our, our goal continues to be, and it's solved the problem this year, but, you know, ultimately, we'd love to be in an environment where we can have a lot more control, have better data, and start to figure out what levers we can pull inside of the program to help reduce some of these costs. And there are programs that are out there that, that allows to do that, but again, we've got to hopefully see some of these claims subside a little bit.
So, ultimately, the, the staff recommendation was to, to share the costs of the increase at an equal percentage, and that's what we presented as, as the ultimate recommendation. If that is not what the board would like to see, we, as you can see, we can very quickly run you numbers to.
Yeah, we share at an equal percentage.
Three hundred and forty.
We share at an equal percentage, um, three hundred and forty. So, that's three hundred and forty K per county, and you're saying if we stay at the same millage rate, that we could see eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue. However, we'll have to have three meetings to explain to all our constituents that we're actually raising taxes, right, if we don't go to the rollback millage rate. And then we, you know, so, I mean, it's eight hundred thousand dollars, but four hundred thousand dollars going towards employee healthcare.
With the new legislation, that will change some because you're allowed to have some reasonable amount of CPI that's set by DOR. So, if you exceed that, then you have to have the public hearings. If you don't exceed that, you don't, so. And I believe that, so, and I think they've already published what that number is, and I think it's, was it two point four? I don't, don't quote me on that, but, so if it's in excess of two point four percent more revenue than the previous year, you would have to notice it.
Whatever we do, unless we do put, I think Jason and Alan and people presenting to us here have stated, if we don't start to get some guidelines, I mean, me personally, I want us to take care of the employee, and pay a good percentage of that for the employee. Dependents, you know, that's a slippery slope, but it's gotta be said, I mean, the employees who we need to be concerned about. And like I said, and I, like I said, me and Jason did have this conversation yesterday, look, you know, we got, we know in budget time, we're gonna sit here determining what are we gonna do for our employees on our pay and step, merit increase type of situation. And I'd rather give that money to them, I mean, and let them decide where they wanna put those dollars than other than, than, I just, if we do anything other than set something, all we do is push, we're pushing it, pushing it down the road, it's gonna have to be addressed, and when it is addressed, it's probably gonna be pretty ugly. If it keeps going, because like I said, you know, we're getting this, they're crediting this thirty grand just to get us to move over here, but when they, when they line up everything, next year, they're gonna be...
That's the sales battle.
Right, I mean, we all know what that is, I mean, but hey, we won't take advantage of it, okay? But, you know, who doesn't want thirty grand, but, I don't know. I guess the bigger question is, can we, can we continue at this pace? Because we know it's gonna go up, it's probably never gonna go down.
I'd like to say you can't continue at thirteen percent annually. Neither really, neither can the employee, and we would need something, need to look at something different. Thirteen percent is not sustainable annually.
And like I said, I mean, personal experience, I mean, I personally pay a fee because I'm on my spouse's insurance, I'm double insured, I'm on my spouse's insurance, and I'm on my company insurance. My company paid, I mean, it cost me, you know, thirty dollars every two weeks for insurance, but I'm on both plans. I think my wife pays a surcharge to the state because I'm offered insurance through my job, so, and I'm on her plan, so it's kinda like I'm not taking it, so she has to pay a fee for me to be on.
My spouse kept me off her plan because I had, it's cost her too much money, so that's kind of what we're talking about. I was fortunate enough to have insurance in my company, was able to get on that, so, and then it saved both of us money, but not everybody's in that situation.
Right, right, I get that, yeah, that's not, that, she doesn't fit everybody, but, I mean, I don't know, we're just, I think we need to be focused on our employees.
Yeah.
Insurance companies, I think, give you the option, though, you can choose tier one, tier two, tier three, which the employee makes the choices of how much they wanna pay and how much they're covering, and that.
And the program here, do you have three different plan options? They can choose a, we call it base plan, a mid-plan, and a buy-up plan with, you know, as each steps, the benefits get a little bit richer, and gives the employee that option.
I would really, you know, and we're not here, and it's just, you know, just to be saying, because it doesn't impact what we do today, but I'd really like to see us get to the point where we are, self-insuring, and that we're able to work something out with our local hospital, our local physicians, to offer a plan through them that's really reduced, and then maybe offer something else that might be a little more, but, you know, where do you wanna be? But, I guess we gotta, we gotta get our claims under control before we can do that.
So, are we required by law to cover a spouse that has full coverage insurance?
You're not required by law to cover a spouse at all?
Only employees.
Yeah, I would like to see us set policies like you suggested, and I think that would be a clear picture for, especially new employees, you know, that are looking at the package. They would know upfront, this is, this is what we cover for you, this is what we cover for dependents. I know that current employees would take a little bit of a hit, but it, in my mind, is okay, black and white at that point.
Yep, if it goes up, we're gonna cover this percentage, you're gonna take this percentage, and we're both gonna ride this train together.
Now, what is that number, I guess, is the biggest question.
Well, then you gotta determine, how much is for the employee? What percentage are you gonna cover for the employee, and what percent? I would like to say a higher percentage for the employee covered and a lower percentage for the dependents.
So, so right now, we're around ninety, ninety percent across the board for the employee regardless of the plan, right?
That's right.
And so, it really comes down to this, uh...
Ninety-sixty-five? Ninety-sixty-five or sixty.
If the spouse is covered on another insurance plan, have a lower rate.
Say that again.
If you have a spouse that's covered on another insurance plan, have a lower percentage that will have to pay for us for his claims, no?
I don't know that we can require, I don't know legally, we can go there to do that.
Yeah, we could just do like, can't charge a penalty, a surcharge for somebody, which, um...
But that's gonna take a lot of administrative work to determine if they're, the spouse's employee offers, and is it current, is it updated?
Well, they would, during the enrollment process, answer a question that serves as an affidavit that, yes, my spouse does, or no, they don't, and then trigger the surcharge if they said, yes, they do, and I'm enrolling them. So, we could, we could make sure that administration of that is pretty, pretty simple. Now, enforcement of it, that's another thing.
Right, so that's pretty my concern.
Exactly, and...
Because you're going on an audit system at that point, right?
You can audit those, but there's a cost to those programs, and with y'all's population, it's not working, quite honestly. It's a little bit like tobacco use, y'all do have a lot of people who admittedly use tobacco, and they are paying a surcharge for tobacco. You probably have a lot of people who use tobacco and are not being honest in paying a lot of costs, so you'd have the same happen there, more than likely.
Mr. Chairman, of course, you all know this, but I don't know the individual, I know a couple, they're in that category, where they cater, cover older. I mean, and obviously, whenever we do it, if we do it this year, I mean, they don't really have a heads up, it's, I mean, it's like, fair enough, we just stay the way we are this year, share a percentage, and then plan to have a big shift in how much we're willing to pay spouses, dependents. That way, they can financially be prepared for it. I believe that it's probably gonna disrupt some homes, because now, I don't know that everybody's spouse has a job or is employable. We don't know all these things, but it's something that if you make a big shift, and it's gonna cost me a whole lot more to cover, it's a big change in the family, financials, budgets.
Yeah, because they live most of paycheck to paycheck.
Right, and, you know, our employee, on average, you know, a lot of our employees that are in certain areas, they're not making a huge salary to begin with, and we don't have a lot of other employment. Most of our jobs are available, or jobs that don't offer any kind of healthcare plan at all. So, that dependent may be looking to go into Obamacare, or whatever to try to find coverage if they can find some, I don't know. Or they get the extra job to supplement the additional cost, but it is a lifestyle change, maybe a radical one for some, I can't tell you, I'm not in that group of folks, but just looking at what we have in terms of Shereen, I mean, I don't know, you are a lot closer to the ground than I am, but it will be, so it may, I don't know. Jason, Justin, what do you think?
I mean, it is, it will be a concern, but...
And, you know, Mr. Chairman, one additional recommendation we could make is that, so, when we're working on, whatever renewal we're working on next year, that if you, if you go with staff recommendation today, maybe someone can include in the motion that next year, when they see the renewal, they wanna see employee ninety and dependent seventy. So, we know how to build it from the beginning. Doesn't mean you can't change, you know, you're not essentially setting policy, you're just giving staff direction on how to present the renewal next year.
Can I ask a question? When you say dependent, are you meaning dependent spouse or dependent children, or are you not separating?
Typically, we would say it's spouse.
I just wanna make sure we're specific.
I just wish these were closer to budget time talks, but, you know, just to, you know, what are we gonna be looking at, you know, when it gets to be budget time, you know? That's when we'll go after the Fandays.
Right. Well, and also, keep in mind, this affects the second half of our current budget.
Right.
Timing is not great.
So, we're talking about a two hundred thousand dollar increase for the second half of the budget? Or a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes, sir.
Across all funds, yeah.
Yes, it's, you know, I'll be honest with you, it'd be hard on employees to all of a sudden get your throat cleared. And I know there's, a lot of people got these jobs because they need the insurance. So, we just need to be, I don't know, I don't know how this board's gonna react here in just a few minutes if we get to vote today. But, it will impact, won't impact everybody, because there's a lot of people that don't have the problems, but it'll impact the heck out of a lot of people. I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, I got one too. I mean, I'm gonna throw a thought out there, my thought, and you can make a motion on that, or whatever, my thought is, you know, open enrollment starts Monday, so we're just in a bad spot. And we can put the employee in a really bad spot. So, my thought is that we, we look at taking on the increase, but within the next quarter, we come back and, and have an open discussion after we, you know, working through HR and the directors, and, you know, and set some expectations for next year, that, you know, we can't continue this, and, um... We'll have to make a budget amendment for a remainder of the year, and then when we get into the budget talks for next year, you know, we have to consider that in the COLA conversation that we just took on almost four hundred thousand dollars in extra benefits. And, you know, we gotta, we gotta wait it out, because while we truly care about our employees, right, we do have, you know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand folks out there, and they're paying property tax that's covering this, and we have to be able to speak to, you know, if we're looking at, you know, a point four millage increase just to cover a benefit, you know, that might be tough for, for the taxpayers to swallow, because they're not, they're not seeing a tangible, you know, it's important, but they're not seeing a tangible result out in the community from their tax dollars. So, I just think that's what we'll have to consider, but you have a motion you wanna make.
Well, I mean, before I make a motion, I just want to share this, I mean, I don't like any of the options, because...
No, I don't think any of us do.
But, I, and I'll explain why I'm choosing this option, and it's not my preferred option, but it's, the cost share remains same as basically option three, where the county's eating three hundred and forty thousand of that cost share, and that we do like, Jason says, if we put in there, I'd like to see us be, you know, eighty-five, sixty-five, dependents versus employees moving forward. I like to see that be part of our policy, and that way, we can somewhat predict what we're gonna do. And obviously, that, that's just a motion today, obviously, we're gonna have to have that moving forward, but, but I think that we, we can't be here this time next year, was my point when we opened this up today. We, we've gotta put some homework into this to make this right, because I don't think it's fair to the, the employee, and I don't think it's fair to the taxpayer that we haven't, we're choking this down today.
So, when I'm looking at the back sheet here, when I see this annual increase, this is what Commissioner Ellington is talking about, right? We stay the status quo on cost share, right?
Right, this is the president, the staff recommendation.
Which, which option three on cost share remains the same as prior, impact three hundred and forty, cost share.
And so, when we look at these numbers, right, a super majority of the employees would only see, yeah, a five to ten dollar increase per pay period, right? I think that's, I think that's reasonable, I mean, I think there's an expectation that healthcare goes up. I don't think there will be, there's gonna be a shock in that, so.
So, I'll second.
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is to go with the cost sharing percentage remains the same as prior year, stay at eighty-four, sixteen, with the blue cross, a blue shield, and, yeah, a motion by Commissioner Ellington.
What about my percentages?
Eighty-five, sixty-five.
Eighty-five, sixty-five.
All right. And that is what you wanna see?
Us put into...
For spouse?
A policy, to be separated.
And then we'll have another time to actually make a motion to them.
Yeah, so can we, can we, I know we say we wanna do things in the future, I'm like, can we put a name and a date on it that we're gonna come back? You know, who's gonna be the staff that's gonna make sure we have this data, and who's gonna bring it back by X date?
HR, HR will have you, HR will have it to you.
Shereen?
This is easy. No, I got it from here.
That's your job, I'm asking a question. But I'm saying, we can't let it slip.
I have a policy recommendation to you, September meeting of twenty-five.
All right, and that'll give the employees plenty of heads up, you know, so...
Mr. Chairman, one thing, that's eighty-five, what was the percentage again, employee, y'all, and...
Eighty-five, and then spouses, it's a sixty-five percent.
Or about dependents.
Also 65.
65.
65 for all dependents, okay, all right.
Play, play with it, give us some, give us some options.
I appreciate that you're willingness to be open to these things throughout the year instead of us making it a one-time per-year discussion. So that will be exciting for us to, like, be more involved throughout the year.
I'll remind you that in September, hey?
I'm excited to see that it's more than just a few-minute meeting in June, so.
All right, so we have motion by Commissioner Ellington to go with the current cost share with a requirement for a staff recommendation for policy change. That will be available to us first of September. I'm going to have a second by...
First of September or meeting September?
Meeting.
Meeting, meetings.
Meeting in the month of September.
Okay.
Work session.
And that may be a work session or starts going.
And we have a, still have a second by Commissioner Watson?
You can't give a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Motion passed?
Motion carries, any further? Are any comments? Comments?
Yeah. I just hate to be presented some of this, you know, you got to do something in three, three or four days next year. Give us a little bit more room. I know you got to wait till the, you know, you can see the finish line and then sprint for it. But, you know, I hate for somebody to jump out in front of you and then the race is over. So just a little bit more time instead of just right here to cut an edge. May not be possible, but I like to see it a little quicker.
And this is basically just for staff. I mean, I think it's imperative, Shereen, Jason and Alan, the folks, well, we need to go ahead and start preparing our employees today for things to move forward. We, like I said, we don't need this to be a surprise. That swayed me from what I was wanting to originally go to when you made that comment because I looked at it in a different view. But let's start today preparing to let them know.
Well, and that is the goal, to have the discussion throughout the year, so we will be better prepared.
Mike, is that something we can incorporate into the open enrollment process?
It is, and I was going to ask the question to y'all, I should probably know this too. Do I have a benefits committee, maybe just form a committee? But it might be something worth considering is having a cross-section of employees because who can almost be your eyes and ears out there and kind of help through the year, remind and drip that, you know, whether it's shared parts of work, maintenance, whatever the case may be, to have folks who can share that responsibility and also provide good feedback about, hey, you know, I'm here watercooler talk, that we like this, or I'm here watercooler talk, that we really don't like that. You know, whatever the case may be, so.
Let us know.
Yeah, they're quoting.
You're going to get, the people aren't happy are the ones you're going to hear from, but it's good to hear also, you know, again, and maybe have a committee of five or six folks who can kind of help with that messaging in the event that. But it is certainly something we could do at, during the enrollment process and, you know, this is probably going to change next year.
Significantly.
Yeah, so just be prepared.
But it's going to change every year, isn't it?
So I would just say I appreciate the data. Again, I understand the timeline constraint, but I want the public to know that, you know, these are our employees and we want to take care of our employees. At the same time, we, we understand where most of the public is with property taxes and that's not something unique to Upton County. I mean, you go anywhere and it's the same argument, you know, what are my tax dollars going for, right? I would argue that the employees are value-added to the county, you know, they're the ones that are doing the services. The issue is, is taxpayers want to see tangible results. They want to be able to see what their tax dollars are going for. This is one of those things that you don't, you don't see. So I appreciate everyone's effort, I appreciate everyone coming in today to get this knocked out. Anything else before, you get a motion to adjourn?
I would like to say I appreciate y'all taking the time for this meeting. It does mean a lot to our employees that what you do does not go in the best way.
See, that it ain't got insurance.
I get a motion?
Somebody, second.
I got it.
I got it.
Yeah, okay, all favor? Okay, please adjourn.
You get, Jessica will fix it up.
I made a mistake, Jessica signed on that line, I didn't have my glasses on when I was signing on Chris's line.